Jesus. No, I'm good, thank you.
Yes, please.
So, so we've got a quorum but no staff, right? Good evening, everybody. I think we'll be full strength here shortly, but I'll call the meeting to order at this time. I don't see anything for the open forum, so at this time I'd ask you all to stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Get this organized here. This time we have several presentations this evening. The first one is one that is, is one of my favorites. We get introduced to new public safety officers for the city of Richfield, which is always an exciting occasion. And given the, the status and the professionalism of the force, it's always great to welcome new officers to the force. Chief Entorn, would you like to introduce us to our new safety officers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, family, friends, community members, city officials, and, and our police staff who are in attendance tonight. This is definitely an honor and a privilege to be before you tonight to swear in four of our excellent officers. Before I introduce them and their families, I would like to just give a little bit of a background. When we hire a police officer, they go through a month-long academy where they learn to police what we call the Richfield way and how we want our officers to serve the community. Once they're out of the academy, they go through a 14-week extensive strenuous field training officer program where they learn the ins and outs of policing as a Richfield police officer should. All these officers that will be before you tonight have completed their probationary status and have been on their own for some time. These officers exemplify our mission statement, which is to safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidents and fear of crime, to enhance public safety while working with the community to improve the community's quality of life. So first I'd like to introduce Officer Mark Mendoza. His wife is Lindsay and children Aiden and Seth. Officer Nicholas Ship, his wife Jody and son Colin. Officer Dylan Schultz, his father Sean Schultz, mother Leslie Schultz, sister Alexi Schultz, and girlfriend Claire Wallerich. Last but not least, Officer Robert Fredericks. His parents are here, Thomas and Susan Fredericks. So if you join me up here at the podium, I will perform the oath of office. There we go. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the State of Minnesota, and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Richfield, and to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as a police officer for the city of Richfield to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
One more item of business before we hear from the school superintendent and other members of the community in regards to the school district's referendum. I would look for an approval of the minutes of the special joint city council and Richfield School Board of Education, ISD number 280 work session of August 8th, 2017, and second, the regular city council meeting of August 8th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now on to Superintendent Unkowski, Yunowski. I, I messed it up every time. I apologize.
Yunowski, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. Wish I had a name as smooth and easy as Elliot. It would make my life a lot more-
It's all in the vowels.
Alright, so Mayor Elliot, members of the council, Manager Devich, and members of the city staff. We're honored to be here tonight to talk about some of the work happening in Richfield Public Schools and talk about a referendum as we have a conversation with our taxpayers about supporting the schools through our future. And we're really talking about reinvesting in Richfield as we inspire and empower our students to learn, grow, and excel. You know, we want to acknowledge that over many years, there's been a great city and schools partnership. And this city made a great investment in our schools. And it's time for us to have a conversation about continuing that investment and to continue that reinvestment. I want to talk about some of the work that we've been doing within Richfield Public Schools. And obviously with one high school, we consider our high school to be the banner of our city and to really carry the honor of our district. And our high school has had some amazing results over the past several years. We have a graduation rate higher than the state average. We've actually seen double-digit gains in some of the highest achievement growth in our high school in any school in the entire state of Minnesota in both reading and math on the state standards-based test. We've also had some of the highest graduation rate gains in the state of Minnesota over the past several years. One of the things we also want to acknowledge that we do as an organization is that we aggressively pursue grant funding. So we look for funding and ways to support the people of Richfield and their children in as many ways as humanly possible. And so we have been first at the table to partner for pathway scholarships for all of our students and also to look for voluntary pre-K where we're now providing over 180 students early childhood education. We've also asked for some significant funding to provide supports in reading and math to our students to make sure that we have services for all of our kids, receiving almost an additional million dollars in grants to serve the students in need in Richfield Public Schools and within the city. Then also working with external partners like Park Niclet to provide free healthcare to every, every person living within the city of Richfield, birth to 21, paid for completely through those partnerships. So as a district, we are really looking for ways to serve students and their families within Richfield in creative ways. We also want to acknowledge that we have two sets of funds within our organization. And one of the things that we are required to do as an organization is engage in a conversation with the city and engage in a conversation with our taxpayers about how we fund our schools and what those funds are used for. One set of our funds has to do with operational funds. And we ask our, our voters for operational funds on a relatively regular basis. We have a currently, current operating referendum levy that leaves us between 450 and 100, or $1,100 per student behind neighboring districts. So if we go to some of our neighbors, their per-student funding is larger than theirs to serve their operational needs. As part of that, and ongoing funding challenges from the state, we've actually made about $4 million in reductions over the past three years. And we really need to examine financial stability for the future. So as we look at what to do and how to fund our organization, we work well with our community to help guide a recommendation to our community for the future. What do we use operational funds for? Operational funds are used for licensed classroom teachers. You know, we launch schools day after Labor Day, and one of the conversations we often have are around class sizes. And how do we produce the most effective classroom instruction in the most effective classroom environment that we can? So we use our operational funds to maintain or ideally reduce class size. And so when we ask our taxpayers for support, that goes directly into our classrooms. We also use them to provide differentiated instruction or supports for students in reading and math to either help catch them up to grade level or also help support their extended opportunities to earn college credits at middle school and at high school levels. And then through those same funds, we expand the offerings. So we expand our college offerings for things like our innovative RSEP program, which provides our students opportunities to learn on a community college campus, gaining both high school and college credits at the same time. And then also making sure that we're able to be financially conservative, working very well with our taxpayers' dollars, and making sure we're guarding against future reductions. Given all of these pieces, just really looking at how we do ask our taxpayers. We receive taxpayer-approved funds, $964 per student. And as we look around at our neighboring districts and what they're receiving currently per students, as we look at Edina and Bloomington, Hopkins, and St. Louis Park, some of our direct neighbors, currently they're between $1,412 and $2,032 per student. Now to put that in context, as a district with about 4,400 students, and if you look at the difference between Richfield and 1412, which is about $450, closing that gap with our lowest-funded neighbor would provide almost $2 million or almost 30 to 35 more teachers to the organization to support our students. Looking at some of our higher-funded neighbors at $2,000 or $1,100 more, that'd be four and a half, five million dollars. And so we would really be looking, if we were to be talking about what some of our neighbors are receiving, a very high amount of dollars per student and definitely more than we feel comfortable engaging in a conversation about. So as we've had this conversation, we've worked with our community and we've looked at what do we really need as an organization operationally to put our students and our communities' needs first. We are looking at revoking our current $964 voter-authorized levy. We also had a couple of years ago, an inflationary increase built into that. We would actually remove that at the same time. So we revoke the 964 and the inflationary increase. And we're proposing replacing that with $1,414, which would then keep us in line with neighboring districts. As I go back to that last slide, 1412 is the lowest of our neighboring districts. So this wouldn't put us anywhere near the 2,000 of many of our neighboring districts. This would just put us on par and competitive with the lowest-funded property tax values in any of our neighboring cities. The impact would be $7.67 monthly on a $210,000 home. And not $210,000 home, a $210,000 taxable value home. Obviously, as we know, the market changes quite significantly. There's often a difference between taxable value of home and market value of home. So it's important for us to note there'd be $210,000 taxable value of a home. The second conversation we need to have is about our buildings. And we have great pride in our buildings. Richfield did an incredible job in the 50s and 60s building our buildings. And so we're excited about the skeletons of our buildings and the work that went in to making those in a high-quality fashion. It's also important to note that no voter-approved capital investment has occurred since 1995. And so there was a large, large set of work done then, but in the last 22 years then, we haven't done any major remodels, only minor, minor amounts based on the funding that we received. So our buildings are in significant need of deferred maintenance and updates. And our goal as an organization is to renew that investment that the Richfield community made in the past to make sure that we are showing our students and our community the level of respect that we have for the buildings through the ongoing maintenance and improvements. We also want to acknowledge that safety and security in the year 2017 is very different than it was in the year 1995. And so as we look at safety and security improvements to our building, making sure that we can guarantee the safety of our students, we also want to make some of those safety improvements that bring us up to date with the things that we're doing in our organization for our kids. How capital operating, or capital referendums work is that school board authority only authors us to, or only allows us to fund a specific type of air quality work and pipe work within our walls. So we actually don't have the ability to make updates to our buildings that are significant, that are not technically outside of the walls or typically outside of air quality. So school board authority includes about $32.5 million over the next 20 years. And that is a similar investment to what we've been doing. It leads to about a million a year. And it's something that we've been working on in terms of air quality to make sure that that is most effective for our students. So that is, would be something that we would continue. But the conversation that we really want to engage in is about our capital bond referendum. And much like a mortgage, we would be going to our taxpayers to have a conversation to say, "Do you authorize us to sell capital bonds to make improvements within our organization, to make improvements to our building?" We engaged in a capital and capital facility study over the entire last year prior to coming up with a recommendation. We actually identified over $165 million of needed improvements. And as we looked at that, we really wanted to work down what are the things that we absolutely need to make sure that we are being very responsible with our taxpayer funds, while also making sure that we are updating and reinvesting in our buildings in the way that our high-quality construction occurred in the first place. So that would create a request for $86.8 million needed to work on those other pieces that are necessary in addition to that board-authorized improved dollars. And the reason I'm laying both of those out is our school board is very, very dedicated to making sure we're very transparent with the funds we have, the funds we use. And one of the things that makes Richfield Public Schools different than many other governmental entities is there's a very small amount of funds that we can access without voter approval. And so we want to be very clear about what we're asking for in terms of voter approval. So the total change of capital investment, which would occur on a home of $210,000, if we were to make that capital investment, would be $15.40 monthly on a $210,000 taxable value home in Richfield. The main pieces of that capital improvement would be long-term deferred maintenance. It would be making some of those updates to our buildings as you look at the external infrastructure. We would be dealing with safety and security. We would also be looking at traffic flow. We would be looking to improve our instructional space. And we would also be looking to make sure that our spaces all serve the students and we're most effective for all of our, all of our constituents. And so we have approved in our past school board, two questions for the Richfield, or the Richfield community. Two questions, they're not tied to each other. And so these are individual-based questions. One is directly related to operational. We're actually asking the Richfield community to increase the existing operational levy by $450 per student. We're also being very clear that that would repeal the past $964 levy. And obviously, it will also state on the ballot because we want to be very clear that this would increase property taxes and would provide vital funds to support our students. And these are the funds, again, that we use to support teachers, classrooms, making sure we have supports for our students and extended opportunities for all of our kids. Question two, that you will also find on the ballot, will allow us to sell long-term bonds over 25 years to complete those deferred maintenance improvements of our buildings and grounds, increase and improve safety, security, and traffic flow, increasing those educational spaces. And they would also increase property taxes specifically on the request of $13.58 per month. So with that, I'd also like to invite up at the end of my presentation, Ms. Tina Lavin. As Richfield, as Richfield Public Schools, part of our role as an organization is very directly, and it's our obligation to share the information related to our referendum work and to share with our community. And so multiple mailings will go out. We also partner in conversation with the CQC, which is a citizen-organized group, which shares information, but they also add to that message. And so Tina, who's joining me this evening?
Hi, my name's Tina Lavin, and I'm a parent with three kids in the Richfield Public Schools. And I'm also the chair of the Richfield Citizens for Quality Community, better known as CQC. There's so many great things happening in our schools right now. I'm very excited about our future. The high school has increased access to college credit courses and honors courses. The middle school has started to offer extra support classes so that kids get the opportunity to reach the next level with math and reading. There's collaborations now with the University of Minnesota and Mayo to enhance STEM curriculum, that's science, technology, engineering, and math. The Spanish immersion program has expanded for the kids from kindergarten through 12th grade. And now we have increased access to technology such as iPads and Chromebooks in all of our schools. These are just a few of the services that the district can provide as a direct result of the community's past support of general operating levies and the 2013 renewal of the technology levy. We need to pass this upcoming general operating levy so that these educational offerings can continue and to stay competitive with other districts. You might be thinking, "Why do I care if our school district is competitive with the other surrounding districts?" The answer here is quite simple. If our district falls too far behind the other school districts, we as a community become less attractive to homebuyers. What's the typical homebuyer looking for? Strong schools. Research has shown time and time again that a quality school district will enhance property values and strengthen the community for all. This year, the school district is also asking the voters to approve a capital levy. And this is dedicated money for our buildings and facilities. It's been 25 years since our district has asked for money for their facilities. The school buildings were built when Eisenhower was in office, and they have served our community well for the last 60 years. This capital levy is very much needed so that they can continue to serve our, the community into the future. So much like our Richfield homes, our school buildings are soundly built, but it's really time to update them, just like we've all done to our homes over the last 50 years. These necessary updates will allow the district's greatest asset, our teachers, to continue to provide a high-quality education to meet the needs of all of our children. So please join me in reinvesting in Richfield by voting yes for Richfield Schools on November 7th. And if you're not available to vote on November 7th, there's early voting that starts September 22nd. Help us. Spread the word by talking to your Richfield friends and neighbors, encouraging them to get out and vote. Think about what you would want for your own family. That's exactly what we as a community need to provide to the children of Richfield. Because as Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Yunowski.
Yes, sir.
A, a couple of comments. I had the honor of being asked to, to address the all-staff meeting when they came just prior to starting school. And, you know, one of the things that, that I remembered, one of the things I recall is, is historically, the support the community has often, always given to the schools, I think. We moved here in 1953, and I, I finished my kindergarten year at Sheridan Hills. And all the way through the public schools and everything, we never lacked for facilities. We never lacked for educational benefits. We never lacked for the, the tools we needed to succeed when we graduated from high school here. And I can tell you that, that the educational level has not faltered or fallen off one bit. As the superintendent indicated, the facilities need to be upgraded. They need to be maintained. You need to have a safe, secure place to study, a safe, secure place to learn. One of the things, and I'm not going to go on and on because you gave us a good profile and a good background, and I'm sure the other council members probably have some things to say. But I was asked to write an introduction to the Richfield Community Guide. And so one of the things I, you know, I talked about the city, I talked about where we're going, I talked about the development. But I want to read what I, I said about the schools. And I will admit to a certain amount of plagiarism because I took some of it off the, the webpage for the school because it, it had an impact on me and it has an impact on the people that are looking to move to Richfield. And when they look to our school systems, this is one of the attractions that we've got now and we absolutely need to maintain. So what I said is, "Our city takes great pride in offering outstanding educational opportunities to current residents and children while proving its value to prospective homeowners with achievements of its students in the creative manner in which programs are made available. To wit, college experience program with students earning about 1,000 credits a year, a STEM program option, the expansion of the dual-language immersion program, and awards in art, music, business, athletics, and perhaps, perhaps most importantly, academics." Take that to the bank because that's what we are with our schools and that's what the community is going to support in a referendum. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, first I wanted to thank the superintendent. Very good presentation. Tina, wonderful. I love the way you, you spoke directly to the taxpayer, the residents, you know, the people that really have a heart in the school system. And I, and I wanted to thank our, the school board chair, Christine Malak, for being here. And also Mary Supple, who's been with the school district for many, many years, very committed individuals. And I wanted to say to Tina, I yearned for the Eisenhower days, simpler times. But, you know, one, one of the things that I see about the school system, you know, we have to repair our house. We have to repair our cars. We have to, we have to buy new shoes. We have to do this and that. We're constantly, constantly investing in every facet of our lives. You look at the school system, you know, and all these components that need, you know, that need also to be repaired. But the best part of actually investing in our school system is that the benefits that we're going to reap from these kids that are educated under this system is just, you just can't put a price on it. You just cannot put a price on it. Kids are really the, the real investment. You know, we'll pay for everything, but you know, the bottom line is always the kids. And for those of you that work in the school system, and for those of us that, that really believe in, support the school system, you know, that's what makes community. And if we want to be a responsible community, and we want to be a community that takes pride in our citizenry and in our kids, we don't have a choice. We've got to support and continue to take pride in the school system that we have. So thank you all for, for everything that you do.
I want to, I want to thank you Superintendent Yunowski for a great presentation. And, you know, I, we mentioned this in the work session, that 1995 is an important year because that was the year that with hair down to my chin, I walked into Richfield High School. And, and at that time, even those, those improvements that were made back in 1995, things like our athletic facilities were in tough shape back in 1995. And here we are 22 years later. That's 22 years of deferred maintenance. And so we're, we're, we're a city that was, that was built in the 50s, and a lot of that maintenance is coming due. That's not something that reflects anything that this current school board, or you, or anybody have made those decisions. Those are, those are operational structural challenges that you're meeting. And I appreciate the way that, that you're meeting them. I also think a really salient fact that needs to be expressed again and again and again that our children compared to their colleagues that are just a couple miles away are currently getting, in some cases, less than half of the funds per dollar that their colleagues on the other side of the border in Edina and Hopkins and Bloomington are getting. And so what we're asking for, what you're asking for is, is not even, is not even equal to what they're getting right now, but is keeping us in the fight. And in some ways, you shouldn't be punished for doing well. You know, there's a way to look at this and say, "Well, hey, you made great gains this year, and we didn't, we didn't increase those funds. So why should we give you money now?" But then if you're, if you're struggling, they say, "Well, you're struggling. Why should we give you those extra funds? How are you going to spend it?" So, so I want to just reject that, speak that, that kind of thinking and just really salute the job that you guys are doing, shout the gains that you're making, but say, "This is not a static game that we're playing with our kids." That this is, they're, our neighboring cities are looking at levies because they're not staying at 1,400. They're not staying at 2,000. They're willing to make investments in their kids. And so it's the least we can do to say, "We're in this fight too for our kids." And so we stand with you and we appreciate your leadership.
I'd like to just say thank you so much for everybody here who's a part of the CQC and a part of the school district for coming and presenting. And for me, this is a no-brainer. Being supportive of the referendum and the support that our schools need is absolutely crucial to a thriving, healthy, strong, rich field. And we all know, and we've seen that with the housing work that we have been doing together, and not just housing, but the, the- together, and not just housing, but the fate and the future and what is currently happening to our schools, and it is inextricably linked to the fate, future, and what is happening in our city. And that is, that's clear, and making sure that we invest and continue to invest in our students and the facilities and the infrastructure of our schools is extremely important. And I'd like to just say thank you for all the work everybody has been doing on this specifically, but also in reducing those gaps that we have, inequity gaps in our school system in Richfield. That is no easy feat, and we are in the right direction. And I want to say, whenever I am sad, I like to go to the schools and I just see the pictures and the writing literally on the walls of the children, and it makes me so happy. They are the leaders of tomorrow. They are so smart, creative, and they need to be supportive to make sure we have, they have every single opportunity possible to be successful. So thank you for coming.
Mayor, I don't have very much to add. My councils have made great comments. You can tell that you have a strong support from the council, and I think the community. The only thing I'd add is, you know, when we've done our visioning sessions this year in particular, I think everyone recognizes that Richfield is a community on the rise, that we're poised for very positive things in the future. And we cannot ascend without investing in our schools. And I think it's the absolute top priority for our city to continue to rise and grow stronger is to make sure that we're providing our kids with the absolute best opportunity to succeed. And this referendum, I think, it's a modest proposal for voters, it's responsible, and yet it's vital that we take this opportunity while Richfield has momentum to continue to reinvest in our schools. And just particularly with the capital levy, my reference point for 1995 that I looked up, Warren Moon was the quarterback of the Vikings the last time we went up for a capital referendum. So I mean, I think it's time, and doing that deferred maintenance and starting to ascend is what this referendum's all about, and we're, as you can hear, we're all ready to support it. One question for the mayor, for staff. I know historically we've passed a resolution of support. Is that something that we'll be moving forward on soon?
Oh, absolutely.
Councilmember Howard, members of city council. Yes, it sounds obvious to me that the city council is very strongly behind these referendum proposals that the school has out. To that end, we'll come back to the next city council meeting with an official resolution and for city council consideration, and you can officially pass that resolution if you choose to do so.
All right. Well, thank you, and good luck this school year.
Thank you. And I just want to, while I still have the microphone, thank the mayor, the city council, and the city staff. One of the things, not everybody is aware, that these schools are a separate entity from the city from an official perspective. However, what you see is a level of support and partnership that for me, as an employee of the schools organization, it's just a humbling and honoring opportunity to be part of a team with this city council and this mayor. And it is one of those things, the level of leadership we have in our city, city manager, city staff, that makes me know that our city will rise together, schools and city, as one large team and as one large partnership. So I thank you for your words tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity to partner with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the spokesperson for Penn Central, Penn Open Streets, and a lot of other things related to Richfield and its activities, Gordon Hanson.
Well, good evening. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for allowing me to come and speak tonight about something that's real near and dear to my heart, and that's Open Streets of Pennfest, happening this Sunday, September 17th, from 12 noon to 4:00 p.m. For anyone in our greater viewing audience who might not be familiar with Open Streets of Pennfest, what it is, it's a day we close down Penn Avenue from 62nd to 76th Street to traffic, and we open up to a really wide eclectic variety of fun activities, and people from throughout the community and even other communities come and mingle and explore the avenue. It's really a day of adventure, and it's a day that I always like to say that the honks and horns of automobile stop and the hellos from neighbor to neighbor start. This year's Pennfest looks like a really exciting one. We have a number of new things happening, as well as a lot of traditional favorites coming back. This year, the event well-stretched with activities all the way from 62nd down to 75th Street. Down on the south end, we actually have something new called the Spartan Zone, and this is an area kind of as a follow-up to our schools. It's a special area kind of dedicated to school activities. There's going to be a lot of the youth athletic groups are going to be out there, offering participatory activities. There'll be a couple inflatables out there for kids, and for a $5 wristband, parents can bring their kids and get their kids to bounce and run and get all that energy out throughout the rest of the day. Plus, something for older kids as well as adults is something new this year. It's going to be out on the soccer field at 75th and Penn. It's called Bubble Soccer. And what Bubble Soccer is, is they dress you up in this big inflatable bubble outfit, and you chase a soccer ball, and you bounce into your other fellow players. And people bounce against one another, and they fall down, but in this big inflatable bubble, they don't hurt themselves. And they say it's a real laugh-a-minute. I encourage you to Google Bubble Soccer, and I think you'll really get a laugh out of that.
Can we try it?
Participate in that on the soccer field. St. Richards Church actually is going to be kicking off Pennfest with a pre-Pennfest activity, a pancake breakfast, starting at 9:30, and then Pennfest will start at 12 noon. So you can build up all your carbs, so you can plan to walk and bike the avenue all the way from 76th up to 62nd. Another new thing we have this year is called Something From the Aviary, which is a group that they're going to set up this rig out on the street in front of St. Nicholas Church and do some aerial exercises and acts. And in between their shows, they're going to actually work with guests of the event who can try some simple exercises. One of the great things about Pennfest is it gives you an opportunity to try something new in your life you may never have thought you'd ever try. Tango is an example, Argentine Tango. The Tango Society of Minnesota is going to come, doing some demonstrations and offering some lessons right out on the street. So if you've ever wanted to try some tango, this is going to be your opportunity. We also have an ethnic dance area in front of O'Neill Dental at 70th and Penn. We're going to have a Mexican group, a Chinese group, an Aztec group, and a Haitian group that are going to have different shifts throughout the day, performing some ethnic and cultural dances. So that's always really a fun thing to stop and watch and appreciate these other cultures through the art of dance. There's going to actually be some free bike rentals from the Free Rivers Park District. So if you don't feel like you can walk the entire avenue, you can grab a bike, a free bike, to use for the day, and go up and down the avenue with that, and that'll help you get to some different spots quicker. One of our traditional favorites that people just love is that BMX bike demo sponsored by Penn Cycle. You know, you see those young bikers go off that ramp and do those aerial flips, and boy, I watched that, and my heart kind of skips a beat, but boy, they're sure talented, and it's always, it's a really great show. There's going to be live music sponsored actually by Fireside Foundry and Sandy's Tavern that they're going to each be having. The Unicycle Club of Minnesota is coming out to do some demonstrations this year. And one of our Penn Avenue businesses, CM Fitness, is going to be having Zumba Dance throughout the day. So when you eat at one of our 11 food trucks or guest vendors, or at any of our iconic ritual restaurants like Fireside Foundry, Sandy's, Ada, Devani's, you can burn off some of those calories from all the good food that you eat at Pennfest. So coming to Pennfest, come hungry, because there's going to be a lot of good food choices there. We'll have demos by Kornam Taekwondo once again, the classic Laram Auto Show is going to be there. And up at the north end, coming back to the third year, is going to be the Pet Zone that we've had, where it's a real whole community of animal lovers all come together. Animal rescues, pet-related businesses, pet services are all going to be there. And we encourage people to bring your pet, they usually, they have to be a leash pet, so of course that's usually a dog, because as we all know, cats do not like being on a leash. But a lot of people bring their dogs there, so it's going to be a real kind of Mecca for people who just love animals. For kind of the toddler set, the Teddy Bear Band's going to be performing near the Free Root Beer Float Stand up at Lund's, at the Lund's and Byer Leash Lot. So if you've got youngsters, have them grab their teddy bear, have them come up and see the Teddy Bear Band at 3 o'clock. Now, I kind of feel like that guy who, you know, at his wedding or some other special occasion, he's trying to acknowledge things, and he realizes he's going to forget something. Now, I can't possibly mention all the things we have, because we actually have over 100 different activities and exhibitors who are going to be at Pennfest, though obviously I couldn't do that, or I'd take up your whole city council meeting, and you wouldn't allow me to do that. So with over 100 things, I really want to encourage everybody to come out to Penn Avenue this Sunday from 12 noon to 4:00 p.m. and enjoy Pennfest.
Thank you, Gordon. Given the number of attractions and what you've told us about it, you've kind of salted the mine. I think we're going to have a record turnout this Sunday.
Well, I really, really do hope so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next presentation is the proclamation declaring September 6, 2017, is the American Legion Day in the city of Richfield. I've got a proclamation I'm going to read, but I'm going to ask the representatives from the American Legion come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and the American Legion and its history in the city of Richfield, please.
Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, the Richfield American Legion has been existence in Richfield since 1927. We are the largest, Richfield, we are the largest American Legion in the state of Minnesota with 1,400 members. We're not just a veterans' organization, are building shelters and sponsors 50 various community events. We sponsor veterans groups, Cub Scouts, various different scouting projects, programs, car clubs. When you walk into our post, you'll see the citizens of Richfield that are there. And we are very honored with this privilege of you having this proclamation for us.
Not nearly as honored as I in the city of Richfield is. We welcome the participation you have in the community and everything you offer and provide to the community. So it's us that are honored to have you here this evening. Let me read the proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Richfield, whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th as a wartime veterans' organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas, over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, and over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas, the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas, the 2017 Observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community. Now, therefore, I, Pat Elliott, Mayor of the City of Richfield, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2017, as the American Legion Day in the City of Richfield, proclaimed this 12th day of September, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And our, the American Legion's celebrate anniversary next year will be 100 years. They will be in downtown Minneapolis, and we will have 50,000 legionnaires that will be coming. It is our job to attract as many as we can to Richfield.
Well, open arms.
And I'm Tom Hendrickson, class of '73.
And you're just a pup, Tom. Seventy-three is just a pup, so.
Sixty-three?
On to hats off to hometown hits. I think we'll start on my left, and Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
Thank you. I have two items. One, we had recently had a three-hour-long city budget session, and most people would say, wow, that sounds really boring. But actually, it was extremely exciting for me. The whole three hours was very exciting, believe it or not. And just hearing from our city directors and hearing all of the cool innovative things that they're proposing to do in 2018 and continue to be fiscally responsible, looking through all the budgets of all of our departments, they are prioritizing continuing quality of services to our residents, and at the same time, making sure that we make the changes we need to reflect all of the needs of our residents. That is a tall order, but we are making it happen. And I just say thank you to our city staff and our directors for making that happen. And in that process, just learning about new programs that different departments are proposing, that would be the first of its kind, the first, if we adopt this, the city would be the first in the state of Minnesota to do it, or things that we have been leading on for years. So it just really made me proud to sit there and hear the stories of all the different departments, where they see the future of their work going, and how they feel, how they think they're going to get there. So that was extremely exciting for me. And then another thing that happened last week that was exciting was Seasons Park closed on September 7th, so recently, a few days ago. So Ayon, a nonprofit developer that purchased Seasons Park, is now the official owner. And the very next day, I went over there and talked to residents, I spoke to staff there, I met some of the new staff, and everybody is extremely happy. People, I think, have felt, feel a sigh of relief, and there are, there's a community celebration that's going to be happening for tenants there. There will be community resources, social services, and organizations coming, so it's not just a new ownership, but it's also really helping fostering community there and improving conditions and quality. So those are my two things that I'm really excited about.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
Well, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez took, I had both of those on my list, but I do want to echo what Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez said about our budget work session, and in particular, just thank our staff and all of my colleagues up here for that three-hour budget session. And maybe there is something wrong with us, but I enjoyed that immensely too, that deep dive into a budget book this thick. Because of the work that our staff in particular put into these proposals for their budgets, it's very clear that, and we're taking up that budget in this council meeting, it is responsible, it is focused on how can we provide the best quality service to our residents and do it in the most efficient way possible, and how can we lead? And there was such great discussion with our staff and council members about how to do that. It's just one more way, we're excited about the future. And my other item I wanted to share was something that someone sent me about a Facebook comment. There was discussion in our last council meeting with folks that came here and had shared their stories about interactions with our police officers, and I wanted to share a story that was sent to me by a Facebook resident, or was posted by a friend of a Richfield resident about their interaction with a police officer, an African-American family that was pulled over. This is, her name's Latricia, and she said it was all right to share the story. "I need to share this story because I was so nervous. Ronald and I got pulled over by the Richfield Police because he was speeding trying to get a Powerball ticket. This was on the night where there was a, the billion-dollar ticket. At 8:55 p.m., he flew right by the unmarked SUV before I could open my mouth, and the light started flashing. The officer walked up to the car, and Ronald began explaining that he was trying to get to BP for Powerball tickets. And this police officer said, don't go there, go to Super America. It's much closer. Hurry up, but no speeding, you can make it. And he made us promise to donate to charity if we win. This was the first time in our lives that we were pulled over and not questioned, didn't have our plates ran or driver's license checked. He made eye contact and shook Ronald's hand. This guy made me feel like the world can be a different place. We got a Powerball ticket with one minute left." I just wanted to share that story. Now, it would be great if the story ended with him winning the Powerball. And so I'm sorry that I can't share that part of the story, but I just wanted to share that story and make folks aware.
Thank you. I can't tell you how much I appreciate hearing something like that. That's a great story. One thing in regards to the budget, I don't think I would ever say this, but the time actually went fast. And not only that, in what I thought was a joking manner, but turned out to be truthful, is I suggested that we're going to finish at 7:59, and we finished right on the dot. The power of persuasion or suggestion worked, and we got out of there, and we did an awful lot of really good work, I believe, for the citizens of the city. The only thing I really want to talk about is city manager DeBitch and myself received an email yesterday from the Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Association of Minnesota, asking us, or making us aware of the fact that our city clerk Elizabeth Van Hoos had earned the designation of Minnesota Certified Municipal Clerk. Elizabeth Van Hoos, had earned the designation of Minnesota Certified Municipal Clerk. It's a prestigious award that recognizes Ms. Van Hoos's professional competency in the execution of her duties as city clerk. Normally, you think of that, and some people would say, big deal, or anything, but you have to understand that the city clerk runs the licensing, the passports, the photos, and everything, and
Elections.
Elections. And so, a lot of very important duties that not only make sure that the elections are handled correctly and the counts are all correct, but more importantly, it's turned into a significant revenue center for the city of Richfield, and she manages it. She manages the staff, and it's turned into a wonderful, wonderful accessory to revenue that comes into the city. So, I want to applaud our clerk, city clerk, and congratulate her on her success as attaining the certification. So, with that being said, I will pass to Councilmember Troutman. We always reserve, Councilmember Garcia is the last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank all our director-level staff for not just a productive meeting, but for all the hard work that goes into creating a three-inch-thick binder. That's the fruit of not just their hard work, but their efforts and their vision for their departments. And so, it reflected a lot of diligence and appreciated that. I also just wanted to take a moment to talk about our law enforcement. And a couple of weeks ago, we had an opportunity that demonstrated real and profound heroism on the part of the Richfield Police Department, where one of our residents was suffering from carbon monoxide poisoning. And three of our officers, knowing the risk, knowing the danger, went into that house, went into that basement, and saved the life of one of our residents. And in my faith tradition, we have a scripture that says, "Greater love has no more than to lay down your life for a friend." And officers Supiny Dean and Bataglia and Staria showed that love for a stranger. And that's remarkable. And so, hats off to our Richfield Police Department, and hats off to those three officers. We're not saying these people are saints, but we're saying they did nothing more than perfection and heroism on that night, and our city owes them a tremendous debt of gratitude. And you have it. Hats off, Chief. Hats off to your team. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Next, whoops, I'm sorry.
I only have seven items.
Okay.
So, I've cut it down quite a bit. I wanted to talk about the passing of a former state, well, of State Representative Mark Mann, who represented the city of Richfield for six years in the Minnesota House of Representatives. Prior to that, he was on the city council in Bloomington. Mark Mann was always the champion in terms of helping Richfield. He was always a supporter of any Richfield legislation that I proudly carried. He was a hard worker, very involved in his community, and really beloved by not only Bloomington residents, but all of us in Richfield, who were served by him and worked with him. And his memorial service will be tomorrow at 11:00 AM at St. Bonaventure Church. I also have a police story, too. The other day, about a week and a half ago, my husband was stopped by the Richfield Police Department. So, naturally, he sees the light. He pulls over, and policeman comes up, and he says, "Well," he said, "Sir," he said, "I wanted, I noticed the turn you made." He said, "I just wanted to remind you that, you know, you should have turned on the inside lane." And so, and he said, "I know, it's just a reminder." He said, "I know. I know you know." And my husband had a smile on his face, and he says, "You know, I know that," he said, "and I'm glad you reminded me because we all need reminders." But it was also a pleasant conversation. And, you know, it puts a smile on your face, I think, when police connect to community. And having said that, you know, I also want to thank Chief Henthorn, you know, for your leadership. I think you have brought together a remarkable group of dedicated men and women who are, you know, you have really led the charge in making sure that they are much more community-focused, community-minded, and community-service-oriented. They do their job. They're professional individuals. And I think, you know, there's too many times that we don't recognize how professional they are, but also how courteous and friendly individuals and helpful that they can be. So, please relay that to them, Chief. The other thing I want to talk to about is our community, Richfield Community Center. You know, we recently, you got in the mail this Recreation Services Program Guide. And if you look at it, I mean, there's so many things in there. This is, and I keep telling you about why Richfield is such a community. And, you know, and this is what we do, so many wonderful, wonderful things. You know, we have the swimming pool. We have the ice arena, mini golf. Look at Pen Fest, you know. Community services is part of that. We have great parks, you know, with the garden, the garden center, and the pickleball. We have great stuff at Woodlake. We have at the community center, we have people that help with tax preparation, that help, you know, educational programs, and the summer programs that you put together for these kids, you know. And I highlighted a bunch of them that were so reasonably priced and so beneficial, not only to the kids, but it helped the parents out. I just have to, just hats off to Jim Topson-Hoffer. I mean, you just, as a director, you just do such a marvelous job. You have so many things on your plate, and you really bring together, you know, all of these things. Woodlake Nature Center, you know, you really do such a super job. And we need to highlight you, too, because, you know, we really take you for granted, but we really all appreciate you very much.
It's only three.
Well, I want to save my comments on the budget for later on.
Okay, thank you. Next item up is, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is passed. City Manager DeBitch has the consent calendar for us, which is long.
Is it time for a nap? Sorry, Steve.
That's okay. I was almost expecting it. Thank you, councilmembers, members of the city council, those at home, those in the audience. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on these items is necessary. Tonight's consent calendar is extremely long. We start with item A, consideration of the approval of a resolution updating the city's deferred assessment, special assessment policy. Item B is consideration of the approval of the purchase of a front-end loader from Ziegler Incorporated for $248,200 less a $26,500 trade-in totaling $221,700 for use by the Public Works Department. Item C is consideration of the approval of resolutions pertaining to the annual Lyndale Hub Nicollet Maintenance Assessment Process and scheduling a public hearing for October 10th, 2017. Item D is consideration of the approval of resolutions pertaining to the annual 77th Street Maintenance District Assessment Process and scheduling a public hearing for October 10th, 2017. Item E is consideration of the approval of a resolution declaring costs to be assessed for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered in 2016 and scheduling a public hearing for October 10th, 2017. Item F is consideration of the approval of a resolution pertaining to the proposed 2017 Alley Paving Project Assessment Process and scheduling a public hearing for October 10th, 2017. Item G is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing submission to the Transportation Economic Development, or TED, program for the 77th Street Underpass Project. Item H is consideration of the approval of a resolution reapproving the site plans for a community bandshell at Veterans Memorial Park. Item I is consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance to change the zoning of a number of properties between 66th and 68th Streets and 17th and Cedar Avenues from mixed-use community MU-C and multifamily residential MR2 with the Cedar Avenue Corridor Overlay, or CAC, to planned multifamily residential MR, MP, M, PMR, sorry. Item J, consideration of the approval of first reading of an ordinance that would make small wireless facilities a conditional use in residential districts. Item K is consideration of the approval of a resolution supporting a grant application to Hennepin County for the Cedar Point-South Chamberlain Project. Item L, consideration of the approval of a request for the temporary expansion of the licensed premises for divanies located at 6345 Penn Avenue South to allow for the outside service of strong beer on Sunday, September 17th, 2017, in conjunction with Richfield's Open Streets at Pen Fest event. Item M is consideration of the approval of a request for the temporary expansion of the licensed premises for Thompson's Fireside Pizza Incorporated DBA Fireside Foundry, located at 6736 Penn Avenue South, to allow for the outside service of wine and strong beer in their parking lot on Sunday, September 17th, 2017, again in conjunction with the Richfield Open Streets at Pen Fest event. Item N is consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing Health Administrator Anderson as the Board of Health's agent on matters relating to the Minnesota Department of Health as it relates to Richfield's local public health grant. Item O is consideration of the approval of the continuation of the agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food inspection services for Richfield for the year 2018. Item P is consideration of the approval of an agreement allowing Richfield Department of Public Safety to accept grant monies from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, the Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Item Q is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the acceptance of Office of Traffic Safety Funds for a four-year grant to fully fund an officer and fully-equipped squad car dedicated for DUI enforcement in Richfield. Item R, consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing a new four-year contract to provide two juvenile investigator school liaison officer services for School District 280 at Richfield High School and the Richfield Middle School. Item S, consideration of the revocation of the Hub Dairy Queen Food Establishment License due to non-payment of state taxes. Item T is consideration of the reappointment of Jack Wold as a youth member to the Transportation Commission for a term of September 1, 2017, to August 31st, 2018. And finally, item U, consideration of the appointment of Derek Sandbeck to the Arts Commission with a term expiring January 31st, 2020. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar. Thank you. This time, I would move the approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
All comments?
Yes. I just wanted to make a comment on item, where is it? We have so many. Number I, the, or letter I, the Chamberlain Project, it's, I just wanted to call attention to it because it's a very important project with a lot of interest from residents and citizens across the city. And it's the first reading tonight. I expect far greater discussion at our next council meeting. And wanted to call out some residents that are here, and we're working on getting a community meeting together with developers and residents and staff to talk about questions with the project. So, I just, you know, often, our consent calendar, things that are routine, I would call this out as a little larger, but as it's first reading, I just wanted to call attention to that. It's something that I expect far greater discussion on in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. And then the next item, we can suggest taking something off of the calendar, correct?
Beg your pardon?
We can request taking something off of the calendar at the next item eight?
You can request anything off the consent calendar that you think
At this time.
warrants attention, correct?
So, I would like to, so I did not, when I reviewed the council agenda, I did not bring this up previously, but I would just like to pull off 7H, which is the reapproval of the permit for the bandshell off, so I may stay consistent with my vote. Does that make sense?
So, you want to pull it off and then put it to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Procedurally, city attorney is shaking her head, so I guess we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, that was H? Okay, so just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, Councilmember Howard is, has indicated that the first reading of the consideration of the, 7I, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance to change the zoning, is going to pass on the consent calendar, but when it is brought up for the second reading, the assumption be number one, that it won't be on the consent calendar. It'll be put on the agenda, so it'll be open, so you don't have to pull it, and we'll be ready to go and take discussion.
Yep, just wanted to call attention to that and make sure residents know that they'll, you know, I expect a pretty full presentation and opportunity for folks to weigh in and all that, yeah.
Right, okay. And, pardon me, Member Reagan Gonzalez, which one was, what number was yours?
I, or H, excuse me.
Okay. So, at this time, it's been requested that we remove 7H from the consent calendar, and it would be shown on the calendar as item number eight. So, at this time, what I will do is, let me do this. I will go ahead and take that, and then comments can be had before we take the vote. Okay. This item for consideration is the approval of a resolution reapproving site plans for a community bandshell at Veterans Memorial Park. On July 12th, 2016, the city council approved site plans for a community bandshell at Veterans Memorial Park, the bandshell. Since that time, a sound study has been conducted in accordance with the approved resolution, and the project has been put out to bid on a number of times. Previous bids were rejected because the bids exceeded the amount of funding secured. On July 25th, 2017, the council awarded a contract to Fendler Patterson Construction Company. Foundation work for the bandshell is expected to take place this year with completion of the structure in the spring. Awarding a contract has taken longer than expected, and the site plan now must now be reapproved. No changes have been made to the plans that were reviewed and recommended for approval on July 12th, 2016. Comments?
I would like to make a comment. I just pulled this item off of the consent calendar because as a councilmember on the east side, I have voted not in favor of having the bandshell in Veterans Park and putting it on the consent calendar and approving it would, by default, approve that. So, I wanted to pull it off and stay consistent with my position.
Thank you, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez. I appreciate your concerns in maintaining your position. So, at this time, I would move to approve a resolution for site plan approval for a bandshell at Veterans Memorial Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion proves four to one. At this time, we move on to item number nine. Still got to do consent. Oh, okay. So, at this time, I would move the approval of the consent calendar, save item H, which was removed and already voted on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, subject to the removal of H, the consent calendar is approved. Item number nine, Councilmember Troutman.
This item is the consideration for the second reading of the ordinance amending the city code section 108 related to small cell wireless installation in the city right of way and approval of the resolution authorizing summary publication. So, this relates to legislation that was passed So this relates to legislation that was passed this year, and that was established for, this is a state-wide requirement for cities to allow wireless company, companies to install cell facility networks in the public right-of-way. Small cell facility networks are commonly known as small cell wireless equipment and distributed antenna systems. And although the legislation limits many actions the city can take on controlling the placement of the small cell facilities, it does allow for the city to enact a permitting process for the facilities. The proposed amendments to the current right-of-way ordinance provide additional controls and management of small, small cell wireless companies, choose Richfield as an installation site. So this is, just to recap and jog everybody's memory, we had a work session regarding this a couple of weeks ago, several weeks ago, and they, they explained that because of what the, the consensus that the legislature came to, we have kind of limited options in terms of being able to insert, assert the city's rights, but that this would be a vehicle that would give us the maximum amount of autonomy given the state of the state's legislative action. And so for that reason, I would support it, but be slightly grumpy about it.
Yeah, agreed.
Oh, I move, I, I move that we, we have passed the, the amendment to the City Code.
You should do it with a little grumpier face though, next time, yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number ten is a consideration of the approval of the two thousand seventeen revised, two thousand eighteen proposed budget resolutions, adopting the two eight, two thousand eighteen preliminary property tax levy, setting truth and taxation hearing date, authorizing budget revisions, and authorizing revision of the two thousand seventeen budget of various departments. Now with having read that, you can understand how exciting those three hours were, correct? On September sixth, two thousand seventeen, a special city council meeting was held for the purpose of presenting and discussing the two thousand seventeen revised, two thousand eighteen proposed budget, and a two thousand eighteen preliminary property tax levy. At this meeting, staff presented to the City Council a preliminary gross tax levy of twenty million six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred and five dollars, which includes a levy for general fund operations of sixteen million six hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars, a debt service levy of two million nine hundred and ten thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, a tax abatement levy of three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, and an equipment and technology levy of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Accordingly, the two thousand eighteen preliminary gross levy represents a six point three four percent increase from the two thousand seventeen gross levy. Pursuant to city council discussion at the budget meeting, staff is presenting an alternative tax levy option for consideration. The alternative, the alternate tax levy option includes the use of an additional two hundred and sixty-five thousand of local government aid for two thousand eighteen. The net effect of this additional local government aid reduces the gross tax levy in the percentage increase over the two thousand seventeen levy. This would reduce the overall levy to twenty million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which would result in a gross tax levy increase of four point nine seven percent over the two thousand seventeen gross levy. The impact of both tax levy options on a typical Richfield home valued at two hundred thousand dollars is attached to this staff report, and I'll let Mr. Regis tell you what that is. At this point, the City Council must make a decision regarding what gross tax levy to certify to the county auditor for tax year two thousand eighteen. This tax levy will be used as a basis of the truth and taxation notices that will be mailed to homeowners in late November, two thousand seventeen. Staff can execute the two thousand eighteen city general fund budget with either of the tax levies selected by the City Council. The levy option using more two thousand eighteen local government aid to fund current operations brings the tax levy down for homeowners who may also be seeing tax increases in two thousand eighteen from other Richfield taxing jurisdictions. As council is aware, once the preliminary levy is approved, it may be further reduced at a later city council meeting, but it legally cannot be increased over the preliminary approved amount. In addition, the city must certify its proposed property tax levy for payable year two thousand eighteen to the county auditor, and set a date for its truth and taxation public meeting honored before September twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. The truth and taxation public meeting must be held between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and must occur at six P.M. or later. The city's truth and taxation public meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December fifth, two thousand seventeen, at six P.M. at the City of Richfield Municipal Center. I think what we're going to do now is let our financial director, Chris Regis, give you some, some idea about the numbers, how we got them, and what they mean, and then we will engage in a discussion about the options between six point four three and four point nine seven as a tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is primarily the same presentation you saw last Wed- Wednesday, but it has a little bit of, has the alternatives listed in there for your, your reference. The two thousand eighteen budget and tax levy.
Chris, can you move your microphone a little higher?
Okay.
There you go.
How's that?
Good.
I'll try to lean into it then.
Good.
Timetable and key events, budget study session, which was last Wednesday, adopted preliminary levy, which is before us tonight, or before you tonight, truth and taxation hearings for December fifth, which was noted in the staff report, and then we'll certify the final levy on December twelfth. Key issues for two thousand eighteen, property taxes still remain our primary funding source. As, as presented to you, two thousand eighteen budget revenues, last Wednesday, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of local government aid are budgeted, that's alternative A, and then, and alternative B, we've increased that amount by two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, up to eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of LGA. Health insurance will increase by nine percent, public safety dispatch increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, debt service levy for the two thousand seventeen A bonds of six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, police and fire personnel cost increases, an increase of fifteen thousand dollars in the rolling stock, and equipment levy, and then one, a positive note, general fund departments all came in at three percent or less, which was, was very, very impressive by all the department heads. The history of state aid, you can see, starting in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, that's kind of the tail end of the unallotments and the reductions that was, I, I'm done by the legislature back then. Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the amount was flat, and then starting in two thousand fourteen, to the present time now, you can see there were some increases, and it pretty much stabilized for, for the city. Revenue comparison, back in two thousand one, taxes equaled thirty-eight percent of general fund revenues, while intergovernmental revenues equaled thirty-nine percent, and local government aid was the largest component of the intergovernmental revenue category. In two thousand eighteen, taxes are now seventy percent, while intergovernmental revenues are eight percent, and those figures really don't change whether, whether we look at alternative A or alternative B. It's basically sixty percent and eight percent. There's a slight decrease for taxes and a slight decrease for intergovernmental, or increase for intergovernmental revenue, but it's less than one percent. Local government aid comparison, two thousand seventeen, LGA was two point five, two point four five percent of general fund revenues. Two thousand eighteen, with alternative A, it's two point three six, with alternative B, it's three point four nine percent. The graph would go back to two thousand one, LGA back then was twenty-four percent of, of general fund revenue. The two thousand eighteen proposed gross levy, alternative A, which was originally presented last Wednesday, is twenty million point six, hundred, twenty, twenty point six million dollars, which is an increase of six point three percent, six, three, four percent over the two thousand seventeen levy. The components are, the general fund is sixteen point six million, equipment levy is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, the debt service levy is two point nine million, and the tax abatement levy is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
If I could just interject, and folks at home need to understand that, when you look at the debt service levy, which is, which is two million nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, that alone represents a levy increase of three and a quarter percent. And that's, that's the issue that we're dealing with, is that with all of the kind of infrastructure that we have, that we have got to make in Richfield, with our streets, with our sewer, with all of the other facilities that have either have, have had to have been replaced or, or worked on, kind of the same thing the school is facing. When you have a city that was built in the nineteen fifties and early nineteen sixties, and, and things really haven't changed that much since then, everything has, you know, things wear out. And our street program, quote, permanent street program, was finished in about nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five, and in Minnesota, permanent streets, you know, they last maybe thirty, thirty-five years. We're still using those same streets, and we intend to in the, in the, in the future, and that's, you know, that's part of what we're facing by, by the kind of heavy maintenance that we're doing on our streets. It would probably cost a hundred million dollars to redo the streets, and, you know, that's not going to be an option for this community. And so you're looking at a debt service levy. I can tell you that if you went back to about two thousand, maybe seven, two thousand eight, they're basically, other than capital notes for some small equipment, there was no debt service levy. And that's the thing that, that, that we struggle with, and, I mean, that's, that's a fact of life, and, and that's going to be there, and that's what we have to work around. And, and so when you start looking at, you know, even a tax levy of a four point nine seven percent, think about this, that three and a quarter percent of that increase is, is something that's out of our hands. Those are debt service payments we have to make on bonds that are outstanding. I just want the public at home to know that.
And I just want to underscore that, you know, that debt isn't paying for some sort of bells and whistles.
Oh, right.
The, this, we're looking at Sixty-Sixth Street, we're looking at the infrastructure that we depend on every day, and that's, and that's why I think, I think of Sixty-Sixth being this big project we're undertaking is a, a key reason we're seeing that uptick, but it's necessary if we're planning for the future.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, people need to know that when you look at all the work we're doing on streets, Portland Avenue, Sixty-Sixth Street, all these streets are wearing out, and when you're doing a, when you're doing a big street project, like Sixty-Sixth Street, as long as you're tearing the street up, you, you really need to go down and take a look at the very deep infrastructure that you have, and your sanitary sewer lines, and everything else that's under, because those have been on, you know, in that ground for many, many years, and, you know, they, they're in badly in need of repair as well, so those things cost. Sorry, Chris?
No, no. Alternative B, this is with the increase of a budgeted LGA, drops the levy down to almost twenty point four million, which is an increase of four point nine seven percent over the two thousand seventeen levy. The general fund levy is now sixteen point three million, and all the other levies basically stay the same, or they do stay the same, and gives us a, a four point nine seven percent Just a gross tax levy history here, I've included both alternatives here for your Back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that's where a lot of the unallotments occurred, so the levies were a lot higher, starting in twelve, thirteen, fourteen, the levies kind of stabled off a little bit, and now in two thousand eighteen, we're like, as mentioned, we're looking at that debt service levy, which has kind of pumped everything up a little bit. So the two, two thousand eighteen proposed general fund budget is, has not changed, is twenty-three million three hundred and fifty thousand ten dollars, it's a two point seven one percent increase from the two thousand seventeen adopted budget, and a four point zero five percent increase from the two thousand seventeen revised budget.
And again, just let me add, the reason that it's higher for the revised is because the revised is lower than the proposed.
Right.
And that means we're saving, we've, during the course of the year, we're saving money, and that's, that's the difference between two, basically two and three-quarter percent and four percent.
Just a comparison of the two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen revenues, really, if you, there's no change really. I mean, taxes are seventy percent, intergovernmental revenue is eight percent, and, I mean, the categories, the levels of revenue do not change barely from year to year. We look at a ten-year spread, you can see taxes have increased by approximately eight percent, intergovernmental revenues at the same time have dropped by nine percent, charges for services have increased by about three percent, and transfers have dropped about three percent, and everything else is pretty comparable. We look at expenditures, again, same, same situation as we have with, with revenues from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, really no change. The departments really stick to their budgets, and they, they stick to try to maintain costs and things like that to provide the basic services. Proposed general fund expenditures, if you take a look at our largest three departments, public safety, public works, and fire, the three most visible departments, their combined budgets equal seventeen point four million, or seventy-five percent of the general fund budget. That budget does not even, I mean, our tax levies then do not even cover that budget, and if we, and we, we look at alternative B, you can see the gap even gets larger there. You know, basically, alternative A, it's about a million dollars less, and then about probably one point two million, two and a half million, with alternative B. We look at a ten-year spread of expenditures, you can see public safety and fire basically the same, fifty-eight percent versus fifty-seven percent. Public works shows a little bit of a decrease of eight percent, some of that was picked up probably by C.D., and that was just a shift of one division to another department. So, pretty, very comparable. Just a, a look at the general fund history, two point four nine percent average increase from two thousand eleven, kind of a modest, slow increase. Full-time regular personnel, right now, we're budgeted for one hundred and ninety-four full-time, full-time personnel. If you would go back probably four, five years from that two thousand six bar there, we'd probably be upwards around two twenty, two thirty. So we really have cut staff a lot over the last several years. Estimated impacts on the two hundred thousand dollar property with, looking at alternative A, which is a six point three four percent increase, if there's no change in market value or anything like that, if everything stays the same, the only difference is the tax levy increase, we'd probably be looking at a twenty-nine dollar increase for a two hundred thousand dollar property owner at two dollars and forty-three cents a month. If we factor in the six point eight percent estimated market value increase, we're looking at a hundred and eight dollar increase, or approximately nine dollars a month. Look at alternative B, again, no change in market value or anything like that, just the tax levy increase, we're looking at an eleven dollar increase, or ninety-three cents a month. If we factor in the six point eight percent, we're looking at an eighty-nine dollar increase, or seven dollars and forty-four cents a month. Looking at our capital improvement budget for two thousand eighteen, it's thirteen million dollars approximately. Some of the major projects, as mentioned before, continuation of Sixty-Sixth Street, the Seventy-Seventh Street Underpass, Mill and Overlay Project, which is more roadwork, the Penn Liquor Store remodel, and there's several recreation projects included in that. Some of the things included in that budget in terms of rolling stock and equipment, the total cost of equipment for rolling stock and IT purchases exceeds one million dollars, the general tax levy is only seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so I've established some operating transfers into the central garage and IT funds to cover that gap, some cash flow transfers in. Some of the purchases, front-end loader, a backhoe loader, a new fire pumper chassis, three interceptor squads, and then computer network infrastructure and equipment. Well, where are we going? Well, as, as we've discussed, we've got significant right-of-way projects, which we've used debt funding to, to fund, and by doing that, we put pressure on our tax levy, because those tax, those debt, I mean, you have debt service tax levies to service the debt, so it puts a lot of pressure on our tax levy. So what we need to do is continue our long-term strategy for economic dependence, LGA independence, so there's, there's pressure to maintain that based on these debt, debt levies and things like that. We need, need to continue our long-term financial planning, so we know where we're going and where we're heading. We need to maintain our current level of quality service, and above all, contain our operating costs.
And then I would add to that, you know, the, the other portion of LGA that we have, that we use to help buy down some of the capital expenditures that we have, and again, with the projects that you're looking at that aren't in the budget right now, and that are not being accounted for, Lyndale Avenue. Lyndale Avenue looms large, the street is falling apart, that's our street, it's not a county street. That's something the city's going to have to take a very serious look at very quickly, and that is going to add, that will add to the debt pressures that we're looking at. When we get through with our, our, our comp plan and our master park plan, I think something you're going to find that's, that's going to be staring you in the face, a, a couple things. One, you have the ice arena, which is operating with the old R-twenty-two system, which, you, you can operate an ice arena with, with that after, I think it's two thousand twenty-something.
I think it's twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty twenty. And so you've got a big decision to make. If you were to convert both of those ice sheets to the other system, the way I see it right now, that's probably something close to a four million dollar price tag. You're going to have to really have some, some community discussion about what you're going to do there. We can probably get some Mighty Duck grant, maybe four hundred thousand, maybe as much as eight hundred thousand, but that's still, even at, even at eight hundred thousand, that's over a three million dollar price tag that you're going to have to think about, what you're going to do. If you don't do that, then you've got a building that you'd have to think about retrofitting into something else, and you, you'll need money to do that. There are so many park buildings here that were built, again, back in the eighties and in the nineteen nineties, and we kept on building park buildings in Richfield, but really didn't have a great plan for maintaining uh, but really didn't have a great plan for maintaining them, other than we take, again, capital money from the liquor funds every year to, to do maintenance on them. But some of those park buildings are beyond the kind of maintenance that we're able to make right now. And I do believe when the master park plan comes out, you're going to find that there's going to be a, there's going to be a need to take a very significant look at what we do with these park buildings. I can think of two of them right off the top of my head, the one over at Taft, that's by the softball fields, by that soccer field. The exterior of the building looks really good, the interior of the building, man, that needs significant work. Also over at Donaldson Park, that building is, that's, that really is a problem. So, a- again, uh, using, using some of that LGA money to set aside to pay for some of those things, um, is, is important as well, uh, because we don't want to keep on adding to our debt levy any more than, than we have to. And, um, so there you have it. I mean, there's just, there's, like the schools, we're in the same, we're in the same spot. You know, to keep this community vital and keep it attractive, we have to have, uh, we have to have strong city amenities and, uh, strong-looking neighborhoods and strong-looking school systems. And for a city that was built in the nineteen fifties and, uh, in early nineteen sixties, we face the same challenge that cities across the whole country do. Uh, I, we're far ahead of the game, I think. Um, a lot of first-string suburbs across the country are in dire shape of being able to replace their infrastructure. Um, I think we're beyond that, but also, uh, we, as far as getting past that point, there's a price tag to pay for it. And, you know, we're facing that now with the city, we're facing it with the schools. Um, but if we want to maintain Richfield, uh, we have to support, um, the cities and the schools both in, uh, in what we do, and, um, that's part of what we're looking at for this budget, and which you'll be looking at for the next few years going forward. So I guess with that, I'd stand for any questions the council might have.
You know, it's interesting, because, um, you, you, you basically gave us the facts of life as, as they, they are today, and, and what we're looking for. And i- it's, it sounds daunting and intimidating, but I, I think myself, and I think it, it's shared by everybody on the DACE up here, that, that coming out of the budget meeting and looking at how we prepared for it, and when we say we, I, I have to admit, I'm talking about staff, because we sit there, we're presented with the information, we look at it, we disseminate it, and we discuss it. But it's presented to us in a manner that, that emphasizes long-term planning, long-term financial security, being conservative in our spending, but also spending wisely, and making, making an opportu- or taking an opportunity to relieve the tax burden on the citizens on this occasion because of the other, uh, important referendum that's going on in this community, um, is, is highly important, and it gives, gives credit to, to what staff does, and then presents to us to have the ability to, to take a, a levy from six point three four and have an option to lower it to four point nine seven, given the fact that we have a significant amount of senior citizens that are on fixed incomes here, we have some low-income people that are struggling to get up the economic ladder, they're on their way, they're not there yet, and we have to be mindful all the way across the board, going back to when we discussed franchise fees a couple months ago. Um, we can sit up there, and when, when the, the expert on, on water fees and everything tells us, we should bump this up eight dollars, we need to create this many reserves, and, and I have to admit to sit there and think, you know, eight bucks a month, you know, what, what's that? But I'm not on a fixed income. I'm not having to make sure that if I take ten dollars out of this pocket, I can replace it in this pocket, because they don't have the opportunity to go out and get a part-time job to supplement their income. You're not going to go out at seventy-five and start cutting the lawn next door for five, ten bucks. So we always have to be mindful of, of the citizens in this city that need our help most, and, and that's why, in looking at the options, when we walked out of the budget meeting, it was at six point three four. In the space of twenty-four to thirty-six hours, there's a reconsideration saying, look, let's move some of the LGA, let's buy it down a little bit, and I'll, I'll admit, that came from staff, it didn't come from anybody on this, on this council. And I appreciated that option coming to us. So I think when we look at this, i- i- it's interesting, because we talk about the debt service. Everybody's got it, city's no different than an individual taxpayer or anybody else. The way we manage it, the way we handle it, and the way that we present it to the citizens so they understand exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it, and why it's necessary, and as they drive down sixty-sixth street now and see green medians and grass growing, and look over into Monroe Park and see what's there, there's a recognition that, that if you stand still, you go stagnant. We've got a lot of really good economic opportunities on the horizon that we're pursuing, we're looking at. Next year, two years from now, depending on development along the corridor, we may have a different picture. I don't think even if we do, it's going to alter our fina- how we handle our financial outlooks and how we do our long-term planning, because we've come through some really serious, difficult financial times, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we weathered the storm, we're, we're healthy, we're vibrant, and by continuing to have Mr. Regis, um, handle the books, and staff determine the best place to put the money so as to advance what the community needs and what we're looking for, we're going to, we're going to continue to be healthy, and we're going to continue in the future to have reserves where we can do some of the things we've had to pull it off at for now. But from my perspective, um, taking the option that lowers the levy and, and takes less money out of the citizens' pockets so they can give su- more serious consideration to the schools referendum and the other things that are going on in this community is the best thing we possibly can do for the citizens, and that's the direction I'm moving. So comments?
Mayor, I think you set the stage very well, uh, and to say, we're not going to stand still, I think that's the, the operative term, and how do you plan for the future with these opportunities that we have? And I think that's what this budget does. It's really looking towards the future, investing in those bread and, the bread and butter infrastructure that we need. Just the, the pie chart about where our city budget is directed, I think, is worth underscoring, that these are the quality services that our citizens depend on, public safety, public works, uh, the fire, things that we depend on every day. I'm su- I think all of us get, uh, those positive comments during a snowstorm about just how well the city manages that, uh, as compared to maybe some of our neighbors. Uh, and there's just so many other examples of how this budget underlays that quality of service that we're pro- providing to residents and looking towards the future. As to the two options, I would agree with the mayor. I think that that's the wise, uh, tact to move. And one thing with our, I think the sound budgeting over the last many years has sought to create a slow, uh, ramp up, uh, if you will, and not spikes. You know, property taxes are, a, a spike on someone's property taxes, uh, is a little hard to plan for than a, a curve that's going a little bit more constant, and I think utilizing local government aid to help hold down property taxes, uh, is prudent. And I want to thank our legislators and the governor for fighting to increase local government aid, and preemptively thank them, uh, to continue fighting to maintain it, uh, because it's, as this discussion notes, it's very important to the city, and I think it's wise that we're still directing more than half, uh, an option to, uh, towards kind of looking at how can we be best prepared, uh, to utilize those resources to think to the long term. So, uh, overall, I think we have a budget that positions Richfield to the future, it's responsible, uh, it's responsible to the taxpayers, and, uh, is something that we should all support.
Councilmember Reagan. Ms. Allison?
At this point, I think, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Howard, um, stated everything well, and emphasizing, um, what the cost burden that we can be putting with all these incremental changes on our legislation is really important to be considering. Um, so without repeating what everybody else is saying, I would agree with option B or the seven, or the four point nine seven.
Thank you. Member Troutman?
I, I just want to take a, a moment, even though I mentioned it, and the hats off to Richfield, just what a reflection of capable leadership our budget is. And I specifically want to thank our city manager, Steve Devich, and, uh, our controller, uh, Chris Regis. Um, as, as a business owner, I work with P and L sheets and budgets. This, this is a horse of a different color, working with, uh, a budget, a city budget with a lot of moving parts. And what you guys were able to do, not just in that budget meeting, but subsequently coming back with almost a twenty percent decrease of the tax levy, is not the result of financial hok- hocus pocus. It's the result, it's the fruit of steady, careful leadership and stewardship over a period of years that you guys have managed your budget, and you, you, you are, and you have been thinking about the costs that are coming due, the infrastructure that you didn't invent when we built our different structure and when it's, and, and the age of that infrastructure. And, and you guys did that because you, it's a demonstrated care for our citizens, and I just want to acknowledge that. And I also want to acknowledge that in the midst of all that, we're recognizing that our neighbors over in the school board have, have, have needs to, and our citizens pay for both, and our citizens feel the burden of both. And so we're, we really are in this together, but, uh, and, and, and for all the reasons that we discussed, uh, previously, especially that, that per-pupil investment in our school board is so far behind our neighboring students, that it's, it's mission critical that our, our residents can support that and support that, um, with a full throat and, uh, and clarity, but that would be impossible, uh, if it wasn't for, for your leadership, and that's reflected by your, by your, your generals and sergeants that are in every department, that just did not, there, there was a, a minimum amount of gimmicks and games, and just careful, um, stewardship of our, our city's resources. So thank you for that, but with that in mind, I'd support the, um, the lower levy.
Yeah, I think everyone has really said, you know, what I wanted to say, but I will say one thing, you know, we've got smart, strategic, long-term, responsible planners on our staff who absolutely recognize, you know, what it's, what it is to be a smart city and run a smart city. But it's like anything else, you know, you've got necessities that spring up once in a while, uh, like we've got, you know, Lindell Avenue, that's a real necessity that we just can't put off. But the other thing is that, you know, we've got to take advantage of a lot of opportunities that are out there, and we can't do it moving, you know, just sitting here and adopting the same thing, trying to, to, you know, just say, well, we can't, we can't use LGA because we've got to do this. The city's done a great job in terms of LGA. I mean, you, you've got to hand it to the city. Trying to wean ourselves off of that, but now, you know, we've got to take, like I said, we've got to take advantage of opportunities, and, uh, and we've got to make sure that we're, that we don't let things pass us by. We, I keep saying we've got to be poised for what's happening in the future. And, uh, and, and hats off to, to not only, you know, really the city staff, who's done a tremendous job, because they account, if you look at the city budget, and you look at everything that they account for, I mean, they're, they're really top-notch in what they do. But I also like to recognize the, uh, other members of the council, because, uh, talk about doing their homework and about really, um, representing not only their particular ward, but the whole city, in looking at, uh, at it as a whole, and, and investing and, and, um, living, you know, what we, what we brag about, and living what we care about and what we call community. Uh, that ta- that takes an awful lot of dedication too on our part, so, um, you know, I, I have to agree with you, Mayor, uh, I think we've done a good job, and I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. So at this time, I would approve resol- excuse me, resolutions establishing the two thousand eighteen preliminary property tax levy at three point not, four point nine seven percent, uh, and a proposed date for the truth and taxation hearing of December fifth, two thousand seventeen, at six PM at the City of Richfield Municipal Center, auth- and also authorizing budget revisions and authorizing revision of the two thousand seventeen budget of various departments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, resolutions pass. Next item is Councilmember Howard's.
Let's see here. I have consideration of the approval of a data-sharing agreement by analysis of use-of-force incident reports from the Richfield Police Department. Uh, and just speaking of an area of leadership, this is a, a new technology that the, our police department is planning on bringing forward, and so, uh, I will quickly turn it over to Chief Henthorn, but the, the, uh, police department does not currently have an adequate program to track use-of-force reports. The purchase of the police force analysis systems will allow the police department to assess the legal risk on use-of-force incidents, provide detailed analysis, promote best practices, and create a level of transparency between the police department and the community. The City of Richfield will supply the records or items of information that will enter through the use of an online reporting tool, and the City of Richfield may exclude any information contained in these records that the city deems, uh, private data. So I'd ask the chief to, uh, talk about this. I think it's just a, a great tool for transparency and improved, uh, relationship between the police and community, and just helping our officers, uh, be better prepared, but I'll, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, member, or Councilmember Howard, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. We take over thirty-five thousand calls for service on a yearly basis, when you look at our average and the amount of calls that we take. Out of those thirty-five thousand calls, um, state statute, um, under use-of-force, uh, allows us, um, as police officers, to use use-of-force in response to any significant resistance that we come in contact with. And out of thirty-five thousand calls for service, we only use use-of-force approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty times out of those thirty-five thousand calls for service. So while that does not seem to be a lot, um, we still look at ways to improve, um, when we have to use use-of-force in critical situations, um, not only bring incidents under control, but protect community members, um, protect police officers, and, and, um, obviously protect bystanders that, that are also involved in the incident. So, right now, an officer, when they use use-of-force, they have to do a, a police report, and also what we call a salmon sheet, which is documenting the use-of-force that they use. Um, that is reviewed by the four members of my command staff, which include three lieutenants, the deputy chief, and myself. It also is reviewed by our TASER instructor, if a TASER is deployed, and also our use-of-force instructors. We look for things that, that we feel, um, you know, are within policy or without, with uh, or outside of policy, and then we make determinations of whether that use-of-force is, is, was adequate, um, within that situation. We have to report our use-of-force, uh, on a yearly basis to the state of Minnesota. That's something we have to do under the post board. Um, right now, it's, it's a pretty archaic process, it's done on a spreadsheet, um, we, we are not able to look at any type of risk assessment, because these are throughout the whole year. We're not able to identify any needs of training or any problems that could be presented, um, and we also don't really, uh, see some of maybe the best practices that we could put into place. Um, so we looked at some software that we could use that, that would give us the tools that we need, um, to improve the things that we need to improve on and still continue to provide the best service that we can to the citizens of Richfield. We are only one of, I guess we're only this, the, the first agency within the state of Minnesota to have this program. It's, it's, uh, used primarily on the east and west coast. Uh, it's a program that is very robust. When we enter our data after officers file their reports, there's over forty dashboards that this information is entered in. It gives us, uh, the ability, um, to look at that risk assessment, which I just talked about. Um, it also gives us the ability to adapt our training protocols and/or look at our policies, depending upon the data that we get from this program. So it gives us, uh, a lot of good detailed feedback and information that we can then pass on to the officers. Um, some of the best practices, I think that's going to come out of it, is, is, we're going to be able to evaluate our level of service. Uh, it will allow us to identify issues sooner than later, before it becomes a, a bigger situation with an officer. Uh, it will reinforce that the officers do, are doing their jobs correctly, when use-of-force is used properly, which is what we want to see. Um, and again, it will help us tailor our training needs, um, to adapt to things that, that we need to change within our police department or within our policy. So, um, we're very excited about this program, if you choose to pass it. So, um, we're very excited about this program, if you choose to pass it, um, tonight. And, and we look forward to getting the data and being able to, to come up with more of a complete report that, um, we can show the officers involving also training, but also provide the state of Minnesota when required to report our use-of-force. So, it's gonna bring us into the, into, uh, obviously a, a different realm using this program, um, that we haven't seen before. So, I also wanna thank, uh, City Attorney Mary Techen for helping us with this program. The contract to pro- provide this data, um, is very detailed because under Minnesota State Statute, Chapter 13, in data practices, there's some things we can provide and some things we can't, um, where other states don't necessarily have those statutory limitations. So, uh, I appreciate her help in, in guiding us through this process, so.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, just the use of technology to improve training and to improve the level of service is, it's exciting. The one thing, I know we're just getting going, but love, uh, you know, a year from now or to, in creative ways to share what we're learning, uh, with the council, with the public, uh, as you utilize this technology to improve the level of service for residents.
Thank you. And, and some of the dashboards, we, we, we are hoping that we can put up on our website so that we can have, uh, open and transparent data that we can share with the public.
Excellent. With that, I will make the motion to approve a data-sharing agreement to facilitate the transfer of relevant da- relevant data from the City of Richfield to police force analysis systems for coding.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. City managers report.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the one thing I have, uh, in terms of just the housekeeping, uh, we're gonna need to get a, a date in October for interviews for, uh, youth commissioner applicants. And I know that the one date that's out is October 7th. I know a couple of councilmembers can't make that date. But, um, we need to start looking at that to, to pick a time when you can do those interviews. Uh, Jared, uh, I'm thinking you might have how many interviews possibly?
Oh, really? That's great.
Yeah, there's 10 spots. Yeah. So, we're gonna, you know, push to get some applicants, but, you know, you could have 10 interviews, you could have more. But, you know, we'll, we'll kind of work on that and, and keep you informed of, uh, where we stand on that. But again, we should get a date set up so that we can get that out there. Okay? And next, I, I, one thing I wanna, just kinda piggyback on, on, um, on this last item that the chief is working on. And, and some of the examples that, um, that were brought forth tonight with the, with the police department. You know, across the country, you just keep on hearing things where there's a disconnect between some segments of, of the public and, and police. And I just, it's so important that, um, to focus back on, on what we're striving for here in Richfield, and that is the idea of community-oriented policing, to have a good rapport and relationship with all of our residents. Um, and just the quality, um, police department that, that we have and that, um, and that we're even working on improving. And, um, I, I just think, you know, some of the anecdotal examples that, that we see, it's, it, it's good to hear positive stuff 'cause there's a, there's a whole lot more positive stuff that happens every day, uh, in interactions between, you know, between our police officers and the public um, than you would ever hear about. Uh, and I, you know, even when police officers ha- make a stop and have to issue a citation, you know, that's their job. And, you know, they're gonna do it in a very professional and courteous way. And, uh, that's the expectation, uh, that I would have. And, and that's really what I want people to take away from, uh, the Richfield Police Department and, uh, get away from the focus of all the other stuff that you hear about police that's not representative of Richfield police. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll pass. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Good deal.